I wasn't here, but I believe there was, you had the Doc Staff presentation?
Yes.
There was some concern about whether or not it should go up to bid. Is that...
We gotta...
You have to go up to bid if...
I think it's $24,000.
Also, I believe you approved the one-time increases for the two corrections officers.
Right.
Yes.
Would you like me to do that sidebar amendment to the contract?
Yes. And that's only to give them for that period of time to what...
Does Kathy have the figures?
We did. We do here. He gave it to us on a sheet of paper.
Okay. That may be something she'll need to have very soon. Also, in talking with Jason, we, it looks like we're gonna have to start negotiations probably April on the jail contract. Would that be something Commissioner Babson would be involved with?
We haven't decided that yet.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Why April?
Because it's a one-year contract. We just ratified...
Yeah, but it doesn't come up until next year.
But we have to start early. He recommended April so that we have a contract in place.
Well...
But how long is the negotiations then?
Oh, it can be...
Really? This is very early to start. I mean, how long does it take to do everything?
It depends. It all depends on what the contention is and whether or not it's something... Hopefully, we could get a longer contract than one year.
Because not long ago, when did they did the negotiations? Wasn't too long ago, huh?
They operated without a, without a contract for several months. I believe it was December before it was signed, but it was effective April 1st.
Are we gonna enter into these discussions without a legal lawyer?
You will have an attorney there.
No. No, we'll have an attorney.
Fool out if you don't.
Yeah, I know.
Also, I wanted to let you know with Cronos, now everyone on the complex is capable of punching in their number. So, the next step is I start tomorrow with training the various supervisors how to go in and see, clear up exceptions and so forth. I'm waiting for Kath to put together an accrual schedule. So, in other words, as of, we've gotta pick a date like two weeks from now. How many sick hours? How many vacation hours? And send that to Cronos so that their system is accurate, so then it'll just continue to feed over, and that will all be accurate. I had hoped they were gonna come in and explain what the additional funds they're looking for are about, but apparently they had to reschedule.
I'm not hoping they come in for looking for additional funds.
Well, I'm, I don't...
They're sending us bills for additional funds. I'd like to know what we're paying for.
They want, exactly. And I think they should be the ones to explain it because I'm not privy to how this all came about and what we purchased. I mean, I know what we purchased, but the maintenance contracts and what the additional training points are and what, what it's gonna take to get the scheduling piece implemented. And I think that needs to come from them directly.
But you also said, not far, it was a month ago, that they giving back the points or the training points?
The training points, yes.
So, what do we have to pay now? What are the...
The programming, the programming part of the scheduling piece.
So, the training, we get our points back and need to pay only the programming?
That's my understanding.
How much is the program?
Well, that's where the rubber meets the road, and they need to talk to you about that. You do have two interviews this afternoon.
Jan, excuse me, can we go back to Cronos?
We can.
The punch-in thing is set up.
It's all set.
Do you have a way of knowing which individuals or which supervisors or which whoever aren't complying with it in case, in case some of them decide that they don't like it and don't wanna punch in?
Yes. Well, first of all, I can go in and see everybody's punches in and out. I can also run an audit trail, so you can see if somebody inserts a punch or if somebody's putting in a whole week of time. Now, there will be folks like the deputy sheriffs that are gonna be paid according to their schedule because they're not here. So, that will require a supervisor going in and altering if they work overtime, if they call in sick. But otherwise, they'll be paid per their schedule. Everyone else should be swiping.
I'm not sure what you mean by somebody not wanting to do it. They gotta do it.
Well, you know, we've been, we, you, you people bought this thing three years ago.
I know.
And they're still not doing it, and they weren't doing it because it wasn't getting done. And I wanna make sure that it's gonna get done.
You're telling us it's being done now.
It is being done. The nursing home is the last group to come on at this point.
Have they come on?
But they're all capable of doing well.
They haven't come on yet. Give 'em a deadline. They need to come on.
Parts and pieces, they are. For example, dietary, maintenance, housekeeping, they're all flawlessly swiping in and out. We've got some work to do yet on LAs and, and part of it's, to be fair, part of it is, they don't know when they come to work whether or not necessarily they're gonna be an MNA for two hours, a medical nurse, whether they're gonna be, because they're different rates of pay. So, it's very hard for those supervisors to try to allocate that and figure that out.
Can the individual swipe in and swipe out?
Yeah, they could.
Then why would not handle it?
Could swipe in, swipe out, and swipe right back in again.
Yeah, yeah.
But then somebody has to tell them what the differential is or what the two different jobs they're doing are, if, if, in your example.
Well...
When you punch in, don't you punch in a particular number on the job?
No.
No?
We can do that. We can assign them to different positions, but that's getting a little bit more technical than we're at right now. Right now, I think we're gonna have to depend upon the folks that are reviewing to put in a differential, a code differential, when they're doing a different job, because a lot of folks over there wear different hats.
Yep.
And they're all at different rates of pay.
You know what happens in the sheriff's department in your example of somebody who works eight hours and then he gets overtime? His super, his super is the one that's putting in that, making that switch, right?
It's a combination.
Is there a card to back up that the guy actually did the work?
Yes. What they're going to have to do, because they're not gonna physically be here on site, my understanding is some of the deputy sheriffs aren't here in the building for two weeks maybe at a time. They will still have to sign off on a time that they did in fact work this one hour of overtime or took a holiday, whatever it may be. So, those are all the little nuances. I mean, like, the registry of deeds is simple, nine to five. That's all they are. There's no differentials. There's no weekends. There's really no overtime. It's very straightforward. But as you get into all these different groups, it is different. And it's, you know, some of it's programming, some of it's on our end, some of it's reluctance just to embrace a new system. But we're getting there, because once we stop using the paper, they won't get paid if they're not punching in and out, because they're not gonna have the hours.
That's a pretty good sentence.
Yeah. If there's no hours in there, there's nothing for us to pay. And then, the last thing I just wanted to mention, I know there's been a lot of talk, I've heard about countywide audit, and one of the things that I know several other counties are doing, and I just, I think it makes sense on so many different fronts, is that various department heads have a weekly meeting. And they sit down, they share best practices. They share concerns. Everything from policies on, discussion on policies and how to interpret them, succession planning, this is a big thing that's lacking in this county, is who is the number two? Every, every single spot should have a backup trained and ready to go. We don't have that, and therefore, we run into these scrambles time and time again with people filling two jobs. So, a formalized succession planning system, even looking at ways to increase efficiencies like centralized purchasing and that sort of thing. If we collaboratively put our heads together and start thinking more like a team as opposed to individual little groups with turf wars, no, I'm not saying that's going on, but there is a little bit of, you know, this is my territory and my area. I think we could just, we could probably come up with some really great ideas.
Mr. Chairman, why don't we get Jan to, first of all, why don't we establish a, a day each month, the third Tuesday, the first Saturday, I don't care what it is, that we're gonna hold these and do it on a regular basis?
Mm-hmm.
And have it something, everybody's got it on their calendar. They know that that's gonna do it. Maybe it's Wednesday afternoon, because we're here at 1:00 every Wednesday, every Wednesday, the last Wednesday of the month, or however you wanna do it, because it sounds like a good idea.
All department heads?
All department heads.
Now, what would you, what are you including as department head?
Murray.
Elected official?
Murray. You don't care. The sheriff?
Yeah. Or his designee. Okay.
No, we don't want designees. We want, we want the, we want the boss here.
Okay.
Human resources, the sheriff, registry of deeds, head of the nursing home, head of the jail. What am I forgetting?
Well, do you want...
Yeah, Kath, the head of administration.
Yeah, yeah.
And of course, Ed.
Oh, we got Ed here. Is just one person from the nursing home sufficient, or do we have a D O N?
You're gonna have Murray. Oh, Willie and Murray.
Yeah.
Willie.
Becky Mason.
How about D O N?
Yep. Anybody that's got a bunch of people that gotta work together.
It would be nice, because I think we can move towards standardizing a lot of things across the county. I've been trying to do different forms for everyone, whether it's the status change. Everybody's using the same sheet when it comes through, same hiring paperwork, same face sheets on different things, you know, personnel files and so forth. But I think there's a lot more that we could do across the board.
Wednesday, the 27th of March would be our first meeting.
Okay.
I'd say the end of this month, but it's only next week.
At?
At 1:00.
Bring a birthday card.
For you?
Next day, in case it goes.
Oh, really?
In case it runs over. Yeah.
Very good.
So, March 27?
March 27 at 1:00 P.M.
And Jan, could you sort of make us up a, a beginning agenda, and we'll work on our end between the two of us?
And what do you wanna call the meeting? What do you wanna call it?
Department heads. Complex department heads or whatever. We'll come up with something that day.
Do we need to have Jerry? He doesn't have anybody working for him, but he might feel out of place. Oh, Robin Reed. I mean, Robin Gordon.
Yeah, yeah. We may have left somebody out, but...
We'll hear about it if we do.
1:00 P.M. would be a department head complex meeting, I guess, or something like that.
And maybe Jan could send them out a note that we plan to do this every, every last Monday of the month.
Monday or Wednesday?
Wednesday.
I mean, Wednesday. Do we wanna do it every month?
I would think so.
All right, we sell it with every month.
We get, find out that it's not beneficial, then we can go to week 32 months.
Okay. So, that's scheduled for the 27th.
Okay. All good.
I'll try to schedule a meeting with Clausen for this Friday, if possible, at 1:00. So, you wanna get in touch with him?
Sure.
And you'll be there as well.
In person or telephone?
In person.
In person.
Tell him to take a shortcut.
Before, before we get there, I, I think it's important under the harassment policy that somewhere in there, I know we talked about it, but there ought to be something in there about, about a...
Pattern.
A pattern of harassment.
Somebody give us a page.
I'm not sure where they should go.
20.
20 is sick time. Harassment, here we go, 21.
So, what was the question or statement?
Pattern of behavior as opposed to individual.
Where is that?
He would like that. Make sure that that's identified in there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but where are you going to put it in?
We're gonna rewrite it.
Not in there. No, it's not in there.
By the policy?
I know we talked about it.
Yes, thank you.
Where are you putting it in? By policy? I don't have to put it. You just give us an updated one, eh?
Yep.
Okay.
You're gonna have a final updated version with all the changes.
Yeah, so I will, I will not write it in now.
I'll make sure that goes in there.
Yeah, so let's make sure that there's a clear pattern of activities towards harassment.
So, harassment is a pattern of...
A clear pattern of activities.
And you're going to put it where? Here in the policy?
Well, I don't know where it's gotta go.
I'm gonna read through it, but I'll make sure that it says pattern.
It's a free pattern of behavior.
Okay, where do we have, Commissioner?
You could probably put that right in after the first sentence in, in policy. Harassment includes but is not limited to unreasonable conduct or behavior which is personally offensive, threatening, impairs morale, or interferes with the effectiveness of the employee. Harassment is generally a pattern of these activities or...
I think the sentence that you just read, we can start off with that pattern. You know, harassment is often defined as a pattern of...
Harassment is a pattern.
A pattern of behavior which includes...
But it also said here, it's unreasonable conduct or behavior. It's already said there. What do you want?
The key is pattern, that it's not an isolated incident. Generally, it's not. It's, it's something that occurs repeatedly.
Okay, so maybe you can put that in, repeat it, your pattern.
It can be an isolated incident, but generally, it's a pattern. If it's isolated, it's gotta be pretty egregious to rise to that level.
Okay, what page are we on? 31, did you say?
Yep.
So, did we do the...
33.
Social networking? We did it the last time?
Yes.
And you get it from, where did you get it?
That came from, I think he's deputy chief McDonald from one of the seacoast, either Portsmouth or...
Oh, okay. A conference?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
He's also an attorney.
Okay. And we did where to place finance policy?
Yes.
That is, okay, something you added.
We were on to employee benefits section four, which starts on page 33, I think.
Slow down, Janice.
Okay. Health and retirement benefits. First of all, whoever does the union contract, we need to try to get them unified so that when we talk about health benefits, everybody's the same.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
It would be, it would be a...
A good point of order.
Yeah.
I don't know the laws, but I don't think we should be sitting here giving away a negotiating position. And, and that we could do that legally in a non-public session.
Yep, okay.
I will say, though, I, I...
I think it's out there already, right?
I don't know if the other counties have considered this, but wouldn't it be wonderful and a great use of buying power if we could somehow combine forces and go after one particular? I think the counties are pretty spread out as to who they have. Some have anthems, some have different carriers. That I think we, we could have a lot more clout and buying power, or if there was some way to join the state health system.
Yeah. I'll bring it, I'll bring that up in the next...
There's something you can do with the...
Award meeting. Yeah. Okay. Health and retirement benefits.
I have a question. Medical insurance, it says 32 hours per week. All employees working at least 32 hours per week.
Right.
By eligible.
Then you get down to dental, and it says all employees working for at least 20 hours per week. Why is there a difference?
It's just the way the plans are written. Dental is...
So, if you're part-time and you're doing 22 hours, you can get dental insurance from here, but you can't get health insurance.
Right.
That seems screwy to me.
Well, that's one thing we could negotiate or talk with Delta Dental to get it so that it's more equal.
Delta Dental has an interest in keeping it at 20 hours per week, because that's more premiums for them. It encompasses a larger group and...
Yeah, yeah. Head and bottom, I bet you're absolutely right, Janice. My note here is, we should speak of county's contribution. I haven't read it over again, but...
We do, on the front page. 80% and 20% for medical.
On the retirement, at retirement.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It says how much they have to put in. It doesn't say anything about how much the county has to put in for them. I don't believe, I don't see it here.
Now, these two categories pertain only to the jail and the sheriff.
Group two, yes. Group two is jail and sheriff. Group one is everyone else.
So, 7% of earnings means what?
Seven.
7% of earnings, but who pays the...
The employee pays the 7%.
We pay the 7%.
The employee pays. Yes.
We're paying 11% or 13%. We upped that last year. Oh, that's for group two that we're paying 13. Paying nine and a half or 10 for group one. And the earnings, is that, trying to think back what I voted for, is that strictly earned time, no, no details, or is that all income?
That is currently tied up in the courts right now, believe it or not.
I just have read that.
The amendment was that it was no details or overtime.
Right.
So, as it stands right now, that is the case, but it looks like that's gonna change and go back to including overtime. That's...
You think they're losing court, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm hearing from NACO, that it, there's a very, very, very good chance that it's going to revert back to the way it was, in the sense that all earnings are included.
Including sick pay?
Not the payouts. Not payouts for sick pay and that? No.
Well, I think I'd put that in here if that's 11...
I'm reluctant to say any of that right now until this case, there's so much litigation going on with the retirement system right now.
When's it gonna be settled?
When the courts get around to it.
Well, it's gonna be probably after we put this out, right?
So, rather than get into any more specifics about that, I think I'd rather leave it as it is and refer them to the website, because there is a plain question, Q and A section on that website for employees, for retirees and so forth.
Frankly, I don't like that, Jan, because the employee can say, well, I don't have a computer, or my computer was broken when this. I'd rather see it put something like 11.5% of your earnings pending, pending legal, legal settlements or pending a judicial review or something that's going on in court. And then, we can go either way if we have to.
Okay. So, you want me to define earnings more particularly?
No, I wouldn't say that. I'd just let, let them know there's a case in court that may fall in their favor and may not. So, just 7% of earnings are pending, pending adjudication of cases in court or...
Subject to change.
Something like that. You're the lawyer.
I had written down that there'd be changes after the 1st of January, but that hasn't happened.
Well, some of it has. I think, I think working, working five more years in group two is past. I'm not arguing about that, dear.
Are we all done with that one?
Holidays and personnel days?
Holidays and personal...
Why don't we just list the days they have to work?
Well, it's the, the gospel with the union. I know this is not union, but...
Do people that come in here and work, God love them, on, on Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Year's, besides getting an increase in pay, do they get any other, do they get bonus? Do they get a half a day off for every holiday they work or anything besides the money?
You mean compensation for them?
Yeah.
The nursing home, each group is different. I believe at the jail, they get a payout for it, either at the jail or the sheriffs. I can't remember which. But they just get a lump for the days, the holidays that they haven't used. The nursing home, they can use a holiday a month before or a month after if they are working on that day. So, there's all different combinations of what people are able to do.
But if they tell you, if they come in on Christmas Day, they don't get two days of their choices sometime...
No.
Somewhere else?
No, if they come in on Christmas Day, they can take their Christmas Day a month prior to Christmas or a month after Christmas.
And time and a half or double time, whatever it is.
Whatever it is.
Well, Janice was in Monday. Two of the office girls down in our office were here Monday. They didn't have to be. They'd play catch-up. Are there any days in here that we think should be changed?
I think if you are going to make a change, we need to give folks enough time, because this is my understanding of what the past practice has been.
Yeah.
So, if you are going to make a change, I would note in here something about starting
If we were gonna eliminate one, it would be Columbus Day. Most of, most of people working around here anyway.
How many businesses have personal days?
Most.
Most?
But it varies on whether it's one, two, three, four, or five, whatever.
You know, there's another thing that some people are taking advantage of, and that's if Christmas Day falls on a Thursday, they would like to have Friday off too. So, according to this, they'd have to take it as a personal day or a vacation day, right?
Maybe we ought to have something in here about taking it off with no pay, or taking it off and they pay us.
Yeah. I mean, they get, it was 13 days? Two, four, six, eight, 10? 11 plus two personal days. So, they get 13 days off a year.
That's almost two weeks, two working weeks.
The, the bigger problem that I have is vacation time. We haven't got there yet. I think there ought to be a cap on vacation time. I mean, we've got a lot of employees that have been here for a long time, and they're now five weeks or six weeks. You're right. We ought to put in the days that they should work. I mean, that's a long time to be on. I just think it ought to be capped.
And that's, well, that's, that's six, that's, that's not, that's six weeks. And are they counting the week as seven days, or are they counting it as the work week?
Probably the work week, 40 hours.
So, that's, so that's, so, so six weeks is really, what, 30 days? That's a whole month off right there.
Okay, we come to that. So, do we have any changes, things we ought to put in here for holiday and personal days? The other thing is the registry of deeds.
In the county...
They get their days off when the... They get their days off when the court is not in session.
Same with the attorney's office, yes.
How does the court affect the registry of deeds? I mean, if they're not in session, if the court's not in session.
Right.
Registry of deeds are not in session?
Well, they, they have people working in the courthouse.
It's based on, it's based on the holidays that the court system has.
Why?
Well, that's what, that's what I'm raising.
Were they in the same building at one point?
What's that?
Were they housed in the same building at one point?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were down, down, down in the village.
And it just has been that way since.
Well, I think when this building is open, they ought to be here.
So which are the days that they have off, that they are close?
The registry?
Yeah.
They follow the court calendar. So I believe they have other.
That's a little different.
Yeah.
Don't you?
Yeah. I think Jan's probably right. That's probably just a read. When I moved here, they were both down in the village. Are we still working on the holidays or we're now down to employees? Our view employees?
Our view employees?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're down there.
Jan, could you explain the, the sentence? When a shift bridges two calendar days, one of which is a holiday, the shift that begins on a holiday will be recognized as the holiday and the employee will be given a scheduled work day off with pay within the same or following month. So if you work in Christmas.
Yeah, eleven to seven.
Eleven to seven, that's what they'd mean by bridging a.
Yeah.
And how does that affect things?
What do you mean, how does that affect?
Well, why, why are we going through this? They'll get it the next month or is there a problem?
It was done to address an issue, I guess, and to be compatible with the union contract. Obviously, at some point, there was an issue with when did your shift start? If it didn't start on a holiday, you're not getting the holiday. That's my assumption.
And then it says, with at least thirty days advanced written notice, the employee may choose to receive holiday pay and move a day off. So he works, he gets paid for the day that he's there and he gets paid for the holiday, or she does. Not to exceed five holidays a year. So. Is, well, I suppose, I suppose that every one of these extra days has a shift at midnight that could very easily take in, so the person would have over five. And why is that number locked in at five? I would think that that would be detrimental to our purpose here because it encourages a person not to take, you know, to take the days off rather than come in and help us out on the days when we're going to be shorthanded. Christmas, New Years. Thanksgiving. Am I wrong?
No.
And I would think it would be unlimited if they want to come in and work. That's just, that's just another person we don't have to chase down or another temporary that we got to go out and get.
Yeah. Well, I, I talked to Deanna this morning. She says they're still having a lot of problems with people taking days off for snowstorm or whatever. And what it does is if an L and A doesn't show up, then it's the other L and As that have to work harder to complete the day.
Right.
But, you know, if there's a snowstorm, I, I thought at one point in time, if it's a bad snowstorm, they ask others if they would stay longer.
I think they do.
They still do.
I believe they do. They try to have their plan at least twelve hours in advance as to who is committed to coming in, who's going to stay late.
I think this enters into also this. Episodes that we got to get straightened out. What happens that you may not be familiar with is that people will use up their episode.
Oh, yeah.
They get seven. And they'll use up to six. And then when an emergency comes, they have to take that day off as termination.
Yep.
I think we ought to cut it back so that we don't have as many episodes.
But isn't that something we'd negotiate with the union?
Yeah, yeah, but it affects.
Maybe you ought to talk together some other time about it?
I, I know, but it affects what we're talking about here, personal days.
Well, it had an unintended consequence because an episode is up to three days. So why take one if it's going to count the same as three? But that's not what was intended.
No, that's right. Okay, we all done with that section?
Yep.
Personal days.
I got a note here for something. The, the sheriff's office that can convert. Convert sick days that they haven't taken into personal days.
Right.
I'm putting a star behind that one. Whatever happened to going to work if it got you off?
Sheriff's office, I believe, does things a little bit differently from what I understand. They, as, as of a certain date, they front loaded all of their sick time. So it doesn't accrue week to week like everybody else does.
So if you start January first, you're telling me you get?
Twelve or fifteen.
Ten, ten sick days right up front?
It's more than that. It's more like twelve or fifteen.
And so how does that affect them? They don't, they obviously don't take them right then.
No, clearly not.
So how does that affect them?
It doesn't. It doesn't. But this just gives them the option to convert a couple of those sick days to personal days.
Oh, I see, okay. Okay. There's another star right there. And what do we do for the non-personal, non-union personnel? They can't convert their sick days?
Yes, well, they are, they get two personal days already.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the, all the people, the, the union people can convert sick days they don't use into personal days. What do we do for the non-union people?
They already get two personal, where the others don't. Under the union contract, they don't get those personal days, so they can convert three.
Oh, they don't get personal days at all?
Nope.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That's why we give them the option to convert.
Okay. That makes you feel better.
This is one area where it wouldn't be, I don't think, too difficult just to have everybody on the same at some point.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, that's what my note is, work to make the same.
Okay. We need to look at that and any changes would be effective the first of year next year. Sick leave.
Now, if you stay home with a sick child, that's considered a sick day or a personal day?
Sick day. You can use a sick day for that.
And I have a note here, I got to read what it says. It says here, part timers can earn sick days?
Yeah.
I thought they didn't get any benefits.
They have, no, they can earn vacation and sick and holidays. It's just accrued at a different rate and used at a different rate. So if you're scheduled to work four hour shifts, you would receive your vacation in a four hour increment or sick day in a four hour increment.
So we've got some system that, that accrues it. You work two weeks, you get a day or a week or day or something, whatever.
That's my understanding from Kathy, the way the payroll system works. It's geared off the hours. The accrual then calculates automatically off the hours worked.
Okay, sick time. To me, this isn't clear. Sick time will be accrued up to a maximum of twelve days per year. Does that mean next year I can accrue another twelve?
Yeah. It does.
Oh, so it's not, it is clear. It means just what it says.
Right.
Hmm. And after three days, they have to have a doctor's?
Yes.
So we can't go on an extended vacation?
Right. And that's more for staff that are here, clearing them that they're no longer contagious if they're working in the nursing home or.
Okay, so are the changes on sick leave? So they can get up to sixty-five days.
They can accrue and hold.
Total, yeah.
And then it stops.
Last question, number five.
Then the system stops calculating until some of it's used.
Excuse me, is sixty-five days, now that's work days.
Right.
So we're talking thirteen weeks.
That's a maximum.
Maximum, I guess.
So if they did not take their twelve days per year, it would be, oh, twelve divided by sixty-five. They would not have had a sick day for however many years that is.
So if it goes, if they accumulate over sixty-five days?
It stops.
They lose it.
Do they get paid for the time over? That's it. All they can carry on the books in the bank is sixty-five days.
That's right.
Right, however, let's say somebody's got cancer and they're out more than that thirteen weeks. Isn't there a pool that they can get?
There's a bank.
Yeah.
Donated time.
Donation time from other employees.
Which is another thing I actually would really like to, not necessarily this year, but in the future. It's a donated time policy as opposed to a sick bank. And in my view, what's happening, what I've seen, or it has the potential to happen, is that it becomes a popularity contest. Those folks that are well-liked, people are donating time. Those that maybe not so much. Nobody's jumping up to throw in a few days here or there. So I think at some point, we may want to move toward a sick bank as opposed to that.
You mean every employee would contrib, or anybody that wanted to would contribute to the bank?
If they chose.
And the bank would decide who gets the, gets the time?
That, that time would be out there and available if someone's leave extends beyond what they have, not based on how many pals they have.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, any other questions on sick leave? But I think that, is there any place where that is talked about in here? Regarding a bank of?
No, right now, it's still the donated.
Donated sick leave?
Yeah, wherever that is. It was in here.
Janice, on your case though. Does it tell you how many sick days you have left?
Yes, it tells you.
Tells you how much vacation time you have left? And does it tell how many personal days?
Uh, I don't know. I'd have to look at that. I'm not sure.
You're on salary, aren't you?
Yes.
In your case? Or does it show on all salaried peoples?
Should.
You know, I might have.
Some way, I think we ought to address that. Donation of sick time from other people. And maybe when we do that, we ought to ta, talk about the, the pool that people contribute to and let the, somebody decide who gets it.
Mm-hmm. Right. Well, in my view, you would only be entitled to get sick time from that bank if you also have put in time. You, you should benefit from something that you haven't been willing to contribute to, in other words. So if I'm.
If you don't contribute to it, you can't use it.
If I get twelve sick days a year and I'm willing to donate at least one day, that would make me eligible to participate. But if I want nothing to do with it, that should not be a benefit that's available to it.
When they reach the fifty-five days that they can build up, supposedly, when they get to the sixty-five, they don't get any more. So can they donate time before they reach sixty-five into the pool?
I don't see why not. To bring it down and start accruing again?
Yeah.
Sure, why not? And that would be, you know, countywide too. It's, it's not just for one, not just for the nursing home, which predominantly uses the donated sick time. I know the jail has used it on occasion too.
Jan, down here, forty hour week, years of service, number of days accrued, maximum number of days accrued.
Where are you?
So if you work five years, you can accrue ten days of vacation?
Per year.
Where are you?
Yeah.
Vacation policy? So I'm sorry, if you work?
If you work zero to five years.
Yes.
It says number of days accrued. That'd be number of days earned, correct?
Yes.
So if you worked here five years, you get ten, ten days or two weeks because it's ten work days. And what does, what does it mean maximum days accrued? If the limits, if the limits, ten, how can you accrue fifteen?
Yeah.
Is that because you could in, in year four accumulate, accumulate ten days and not take them? And then next year?
That's exactly what it is. That's exactly what it is.
Next year, you can, you can, you better take them because you can only hold on to fifteen?
That's exactly what it is. Kathy explained that you can carry over your time, but you can only then accrue one half of what that next year will be. It'll stop at that point.
And when it accrues, you don't get paid for those days. If you've accrued, let's say you, you, two years, you don't go on vacation, so you have twenty days.
You'd only have fifteen.
You'd have fifteen, but you don't get paid for the other five.
Right.
So you best take them.
Mm-hmm.
I have a problem with the bottom one, sixteen to twenty.
Okay.
You're going to accrue up to a maximum of thirty-five days. I think that sixteen and twenty ought to be eliminated and eleven to fifteen plus would be twenty days accrued and up to thirty days maximum. That's a lot of time off.
It is.
Thirty-five days, realizing that.
You think so, evidently?
They've been here sixteen, sixteen years or twenty years, yes, they've had a lot of time. But still, we need people to work.
So.
And we got a case, I, I think, I know of one case that they're eligible for that, and I'm sure.
Why wouldn't we be better off with something like eleven through twenty, twenty and thirty, but maybe, maybe some additional hours or a time and a half? Because that would, that's. Because that would, that's still cheaper than, than having to hire a temporary to come in and cover for that person?
Yeah.
Are you talking about changes now for one-one-fourteen? To change, because people currently have plans, I think, most likely.
Oh, yeah, we can do it right away.
Right. But I could put a note in there that's starting one-one-fourteen.
Except for the jail.
They get, they get too much time coming.
Another option might be to extend the years of service. So instead of zero to five, put zero to seven, and then eight to twelve, and then, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. But I still think the sixteen to twenty, they, we ought to eliminate that one.
So you capped it four weeks?
Yeah.
Four weeks plus the ten? Yeah, not five weeks.
Yeah. Yeah. What do you think?
Oh, maybe we could substitute a gold pin for the last two weeks, Ebenezer?
I'm sure somebody by name of Babson would pick it up and say, "Why are we doing that?" Would you rather give him a bouquet of flowers?
I don't have as much trouble with it as you do. It is a lot of time.
It is.
Twenty-five days is five weeks off.
It is.
It isn't, it isn't just...
But they could take thirty-five days off. All right, I...
Can we think about that one?
All right.
You might have a point, David.
Thank you. All right. Let's, um...
Wanna quit there, because it's a good, it's a break, and then we can go on to the next section? Pick up Jason and...
Yeah, let's do that. I think at this time, we'd like to move into non-public session for personnel at the jail. And perhaps, no, personnel at the jail. I make that a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kenny.
Any further discussion, I guess? Roll call.
Commissioner Kenny, yes. Commissioner Soss, Commissioner...
Yeah, okay. All right, hold it. We haven't voted yet.
We were gonna, um, talk about the, um...
The ranking?
No, we decided that we're gonna hold that off until another week.
Okay.
Yeah. Jason, you had your hand up.
Yes, sir. Prior to going, prior to throwing it to, um, non-public, I'd like to take this opportunity, the Board of Commissioners, like to introduce our newest correctional officer, Stephen Burrows. He comes to us from Bellknap County. He was a court security officer through the Bellknap County Sheriff's Office. He is taking over as a full-time position. He is active duty with the Army National Guard in the form of a military police officer. So Officer Burrows, Board of Commissioners Chairman, David Sorensen, Vice Chair, David Babson, and Clerk, Asha Kenny.
How can you be on active duty and be here at the same time?
Uh, it's active duty National Guard, sir.
So it's a weekend or something?
One weekend a month, two, that's correct, sir.
Until you get that letter that says...
Two more years, sir.
Well, good.
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you for joining our group.
Thank you, sir.
Take a vote, non-public?
Okay. All right, roll call for non-public.
Who, who made the motion?
I made a motion.
I'll second.
You second?
There was already a motion and second, and a roll call was already...
Roll call, we're waiting for roll call.
They just need to say all in favor. Roll call's been done.
It has been?
Yeah, all in favor.
Did I say yes? Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so voted then. And then we'll, we'll get to the interviews. The motion passes, right?
Yeah.
Got the seal? Okay.
What's the one page? I thought we came to the vacation policy, now we did.
I've got, interception, recording, and disclosure...
What, what number is that?
We've already gone over that. That's the one that I actually, I said you can just insert it.
Oh.
We already went over that.
We, we're at the break point.
Oh, okay.
So we are, section five, leave of absence.
Are we doing that now, or are we waiting?
No, we're waiting on section five. That's the last one we gotta do, right?
We're doing federal medical leave now?
Leave of absence, and job-related injuries and illnesses, the final two sections.
Next week, let's finish this.
Yeah.
Yep. And this page here then goes in where?
I'll give you the final verdict. We're not sure where that's gonna fit in, but once I've got this all realigned and all...
Okay, so, so you give us an insert?
Yeah, remember, I've given you each the public policy?
Yeah, I don't know if I, it's probably downstairs.
If you don't have it, it's gonna be in the next version. I just don't know where it is.
You will update it anyway.
We're only in the non-public for interviews.
So we're out of, we're out of non-public, we're back in public, but, no, we're not really. We gotta be in non-public for the interviews, so...
Yeah, but we're back in public, so...
And then you have to go back into non-public.
We'll go back into non-public.
Make a motion, go back in and non-public for personnel reasons?
Second. All those who spoil the motion, say aye.
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 You didn't even ask if we have something to say. I had something to bring up.
In non-public?
No, in public.
Oh.
You didn't even ask.
Okay, we haven't had a vote.
Yeah, um, last week, there was a motion made by Commissioner Babson about attorneys that only the chairman can call attorney. And I thought it was an inappropriate motion, that only the chairman can call the attorney.
Based, based on a majority vote of the Board of Commissioners?
Yeah, later, later, it was a man, it was somebody from the public spoke out. But, um, last week, you made a call to Liz Bailey and asked her to look at my website. There was no vote taken.
I never, I never called Liz Bailey.
There was...
I didn't call Liz Bailey.
There was no vote taken, and I wonder why you asked her to go look at my website.
I did not.
And I did not.
Are you saying that I did?
That is what I asked you.
You know, Commissioner, this is out of hand. You wrote the letter in the paper. I would like to know where and what you have for any basis that I'm irresponsible and negligent. And I'd like to sell it right now, so it's on the film. What is it?
Because it's what you are doing, you wanna violate the law.
How?
You keep on tracking every week and say...
Wait a minute, how am I violating the law?
You said you wanna release an investigation, what is it?
That's right, and that's not violating the law. I did, I voted, I made the motion,
to the public.
And you people voted it down, and you're absolutely wrong, and you're not helping the situation here at all.
So I wanna know more about this calling Liz Bailey.
And I didn't call her.
Did she say, somebody called her?
I'm not saying who said anything. I just asked you if you called her.
No, you didn't. You told him he called her.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't call Liz Bailey...
Oh, okay, I'm just asking.
To check your website. Is that...
That is, that was my question.
Well, the answer is, neither one of the commissioners have called Liz Bailey to check your website.
Okay.
I don't know why I would do that. Anyway, okay?
And where, where is the proof that opening up these minutes is illegal? Could you guide me in that direction, please?
What minutes are you talking about?
Of the Reed, Kenny, the final report.
Investigation.
Where does it say it's illegal?
You violate the law, then, if you expose it to the public?
I haven't said a word to anybody. I haven't even read the report. Where does it say that it's illegal to ask to have this report released? Where? Give me an example.
You fi, if you violate the law, it's an internal investigation, and it's exempt by law. And you find it needs to go everywhere you went, you were campaigning, and you write it in the paper. Oh, it need, you're looking out for the public, the public needs to know about it. It's exempt by law.
It is, but it's exempt by law, but I...
Attorney-client privilege, it's exempt by law. It's an internal investigation, it's a national issue.
The problem is, it never went any further. He has a right to, to ask for a vote, and we voted. So we can't complain that he has, um, violated any law. If he, if it had passed, then maybe it could be said, maybe. But up until that point...
I doubt that it could be said in that, because it would be a two-to-one, or obviously a two-to-one vote.
True. But legally, whether, you know, in the investigation, whether it says you can re, release it or not release it based on the two people or whatever that signed the agreement. But anyway, okay. You got anything else you wanna bring up?
No, I have only one question.
Okay. Then we will...
So we're going into non-public?
Then we'll now move into non-public for personnel. I hear a second. Again?
Second.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Commissioner Sossen?
Yes.
Commissioner Babson?
Yes.
At one-twelve.
How did you vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't hear you. Thank you.